A E is a resolution submitting to the registered qualified electors of the city of Colorado Springs at the coordinated election conducted mail ballot to be held on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, the question of imposition and collection of a 10 cent per bag fee on single-use plastic bags, providing for the form of the ballot title and text, and providing for certain matters with respects to the election and providing effective date of this resolution. And A E is an ordinance creating a new Article 15, Single-Use Plastic Bag Fees of Chapter 7, Neighborhood Vitality and Community Health of the Code of the City of Colorado Springs 2001, as amended pertaining to the imposition and collection of a 10 cent fee on a single-use plastic bag and providing for penalties and remedies of the violation thereof. So it is 2:58, let's come back at 3:10.
Okay, we're ready to start.
Okay, Yolanda, let me give you the floor, go ahead.
Thank you, President Scorman, are you able to hear me fine?
Yes, yes, I can hear you fine.
Okay, great, so first of all, I'm just gonna start on a macro level with a video about what plastics do to our world, and then I'll bring it down by the end to our city. So if we can start with that video, that would be great.
Okay, it'll take just a second to pull up the video, and there are some concerns that the audio portion of a video won't play over Teams. So we'll cross our fingers and hope that that works.
I hope that it does, and while you're setting up, talk about whiplash coming from this, from the other topic that we've discussed, but again, our staff, Mark Smith, has done incredible work on this, and Carly and Ted and Sam and everybody's been working on this really hard. So I just want to let them know how much I appreciate them and all their hard work. And I hope I didn't leave anybody out.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and play the video now.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're not hearing sound.
I think we can get the picture without the sound though, right?
Right.
Well, it's really too bad that we don't have the sound, I'll be sending a link out to the video to everyone. I don't think we need to keep playing the video since it doesn't have the audio explaining what's going on.
Okay, go ahead, Yolanda.
Councilmember Avila?
Yeah.
Carly is going to send those links out to council for the videos.
I think we already got it. Okay, so go ahead, Yolanda, and let's go forward, yeah.
Thank you, President Scorman. All right, so I initially wanted to bring this forward. I was contacted by several constituents throughout the entire city, a real diverse group of people, asking for me to bring forward a plastic ban, a ban on plastic bag use. And I saw in the legislature that there's a ban on banning plastic. But the legislature ended up taking this on, so I kinda held back, still looking to, we still moved forward on it to bring all the materials together, but just held back because I wanted to see what happened with the state legislature, because they were gonna take away the ban on banning plastics and then ban all single-use plastic. Well, we all know what happened, COVID happened, and that went by the wayside. And so I thought now I would bring it back, and I know there's, we'll talk about it more. I'd like to bring it back because I feel like there's, environmentally, it's the right thing to do, but there's been asked, a lot of people have asked for this to happen. So I am proposing that we do a 10 cent fee on grocery bags, on plastic bags from different stores and like liquor stores, of course grocery stores, just stores that use plastic bags and use reusable, reusable bags for that. And I'm asking for the 10 cent fee so that four cents could go back to the stores so they could do their administrative processing work, but that the rest come to us, six cents, so that with that six cents, we could use it for our administrative fees, but also to do trash pickups throughout the entire city. Now, I know that we have some trash pickups going on, and a lot of it, a lot of it is volunteers. And it's, you know, we're coming up on a half a million people, and that's a lot to ask of our volunteers. A lot of people are really excited about this, and we look at how are we gonna impact? You, people are, you know, in tough situations, but grocery stores and liquor stores and cannabis stores, they're doing really good. And they've kinda had their pick of who, I have a, like an intern who is at CC and this, there's so many people there, so she's working at Safeway, but they won't even give her any leeway to work around school or anything, because they can do what they want with these kids, because everybody needs a job. So I don't think it will impact these stores in a difficult way. So I, I wanna do this because I get so many calls from all over, and all of you have too, emails as well, about all the trash, this, the byways, the highways, wherever you go. And so I thought it would be a good thing to do in terms of behavioral change in using these reusable bags, and also in keeping our city clean. You know, when I grew up here, this place was pristine. I remember going to different parts of the nation or even other cities, and I thought, wow, they're so dirty. Except for Utah, I have to admit that Utah was always super clean too. But, and it's been disheartening, because even on a windy day, trash bags will get caught in our trees and our bushes, which have often happened in my own front and backyards. So there, it's all over the place, and it's out of control. And code enforcement is not able to keep up with it. No one's able to keep up with the immense amount of trash that's going on throughout the whole city. So with that, I'd like to bring on... Excuse me. I'm wondering if Dee Cunningham, I know we've, sorry? Oh, oh, sorry, I keep going back and forth. Anyway, I'd like to see if Sheray would come up and give us some of the numbers on this. Sheray, are you in the house?
Councilmember Ms. Cunningham is here.
Okay, well, okay. So I kinda got confused, because I thought that Ms. Cunningham was first and then Sheray, but either/or is fine, so if Dee Cunningham would come up, that would be great.
She's on. Run up Dee.
After, I will say, good morning. Good afternoon, council, thank you for having me today. My name is Dee Cunningham, and I don't know how to use your little widget for my, oh, there it's up. Thank you. Keep Colorado Springs Beautiful has...
And Dee, maybe if you stand back a little bit, Dee, just because I think you made me a little bit of an echo, yeah, is that?
Okay, am I too loud usually?
Just an echo.
All right, is this better?
That's better.
Okay. Keep Colorado Springs Beautiful has been an affiliate of Keep America Beautiful for 30 years. This December, we celebrate our 30-year anniversary. I've been with KCSB for 24 years, and we've proudly served the community and the environment for that long. We started in 1997 with Chief Kramer, who asked me to go to a spot that was kind of a big mess, and he asked if I could help clean the situations and resolve the situations. I said, of course, which led to a contract, which was enacted late in the 90s with the city for $45,000 a year with specific requirements. So I think what I'd like to do, if I do this right, here's a before and after of a storm drain. And this is typically what we do during the day. And this could be a city storm drain, it could be adjacent to CDOT property, also El Paso County, everything goes together. This is right off the Midland Trail. So the property you're looking at off the trail belongs to CDOT, but the city trail goes right through it. This is also right off the Midland Trail. We also plant beautiful things, these are our current flower beds. So we have a beautiful Colorado emblem in Memorial Park. And fortunately, I was able to redesign and re-landscape the front of Municipal Court with all pollinator plants that are native to Colorado, most of them are native. So for the last 12 months, these are our figures. For transient camps, we've cleaned 105 camps, and you see the trash amounts in bags and cubic yards. Obviously, lots of syringes, we have 301 volunteers that worked 1,474 hours. Our special cleanups, we identify that as trail cleanups and open space areas that are just litter everywhere. We've done 355. It says zero needles, unfortunately, I have a very old system, and there's no place to put the needles, but we've picked up probably over 2,000 just on trails and public spaces.
And Dee, Dee, I think it'd be good to focus on the plastic bag issue that...
I was asked for a lot of information, so plastic bags...
Instead of just a whole broad...
Okay.
Yeah.
Plastic makes up, aside from furniture and stuff, probably a good 45% of what we clean up daily. That's in the form of plastic bags from whatever little market people are getting food at. Trash bags, just general trash bags blowing around, plastics, things like that. All of that ends up in the creek if it's near it, because the wind blows it downstream. And so we fish out quite a lot of plastics from our creeks. Everything you saw in that film related to the ocean, these plastics will end up there eventually, whether it's in small pieces, whether it's in micro particles, but it will get to the ocean eventually. So it affects the entire water system. If it blows down in a neighborhood storm drain, it goes down the grate, washes right down, and eventually gets to the ocean. Do you have any specific questions you'd like to ask?
Well Dee, if I can ask, you know, so, you know, this would, this would provide more money for cleanups, and just wanted to have you express, you know, briefly, whether you think that's something that would, the community would really benefit by, and it would be something that would, would help you with your mission.
Oh my gosh, we could expand three times where we are now with the amount of public community interest to participate. We work with restorative justice programs, we work with court-ordered volunteers. If I were to able, if I were able to expand our team and maybe get another truck, we would be able to be in three to four places at once, at least five days a week, which would make an incredible difference. We, we focus a lot on the trails and the waterways and things like that, and that's really important. But we also need to get more on the roads, more in neighborhoods. And I think the big thing we could do is we could do so much focused education to help the community members understand the ramifications of plastics and litter in general.
Okay, thank you Dee. Yolanda, did you want Sheray to come up next, any other, any question for Dee at this point?
Yeah, and I really appreciate the, your presentation. And also, don't you rely heavily on volunteers?
Whether they're community volunteers, whether they're court-ordered, they still have a choice to come to us. And I have to tell you, my team, who is paid, the three of us did all the cleanup during the heat of the COVID. So we continued our services and just recently started taking volunteers back in. And so we don't slow down no matter what.
Well, thank you for keeping us beautiful. All right, so Sheray, thank you so much, Dee Cunningham. Sheray, will you give a financial analysis?
Financial officer, and I was able to provide some information, trying to estimate the amount of revenue that could be collected with the 10 cent bag fee. I believe that you were provided three different values, and what we did was try to look at other communities, Boulder in particular, who has already implemented this type of fee. What we did was look at, similar to Boulder, they only charge the 10 cent plastic bag fee at grocery stores. So that's how we sort of started the analysis, and then looked at it more along the lines of what would you anticipate the number of plastic bags purchased based on the number, the total value of groceries purchased. And so we were able to look at it a few different ways, and we're assuming a 75% compliance at this time. Some of the feedback that we received from other communities was that they thought the compliance would be a little higher, so we wanted to be a little bit conservative, just particularly as we were getting a program started. So we estimated anywhere between $937,000 and almost $1.7 million per year for the revenue.
Okay, any, any other questions or thoughts, Sheray, any, anything for her?
No one has questions for Sheray.
Not at this point, okay, Yolanda, go ahead.
Thank you, President Scorman. So I know that I met with each of you, and including Jeff Green, regarding this, and one of the things that Tom brought up, and I think others did too as well, is that like, right now, there's Trader Joe's that's not allowing plastic, I mean, any reusable bags. So I wanted to say about that is that this isn't going to start, or we're asking that it start not till July 1st of 2021. And by then, we should, we should have most of the COVID situation behind us on that. And two, with reusable bags, it's like, I think we all reuse our jackets and our coats that we go into the stores all the time, so, you know, that doesn't make any sense. So if you have any questions, or, this is just a very rough, rough draft, but I wanted to make sure that it got in front of you and in the, in front of the public to see what we're doing on the plastic bag fee.
All right, is there anybody from council that would like to comment? I have some thoughts, but I'd like to see if anybody else has. I guess we wanna, to give, you know, have a consensus about whether to move forward with this. So we have a hand up from Don, go ahead, Don.
I don't mind putting this on the ballot, but I need a couple of changes first, please. As we discussed, don't think that we should exempt people on federal or state food assistance programs, especially since part of the money that, out of the six, six cents that comes to the city, you're going to be buying bags to give away to the public. If we're gonna tackle this problem, let's get everybody involved. And I'd rather use part of six cents to buy bags for giving to the public at whole than to exempt somebody and keep the problem going of the plastic bags. The other one was a question for Wayne Neta. If I read Section 2 correctly, does that mean that if somebody violates this, they can end up with 189 days jail?
I'm gonna let Mark answer that.
Council Mark Smith from the City Attorney's Office. There are sections within this provision here that do provide for unlawful acts if people don't follow this actual structure. You know, when we were taking a look at other places throughout the state that have implemented this, and I believe Denver's in the process of implementation, Boulder has already implemented this, I believe Aspen and Breckenridge, and there may be one or two others. There does have to be a mechanism for enforcement. So there are a couple of different ways that this could potentially be enforced as drafted. One being going through a process that's very similar to sales tax in terms of sales tax remittance and a hearing process, where city finance could go in and audit books, and that would be more of a civil-type process. But it could get to a point where if somebody was violating this to an extent where there was some fraudulent intent or something along those lines, that there could be some criminal sanctions, as drafted.
Okay, I, we have passed up for equal or even more egregious offenses, where we have made sure there was no jail time involved. And I just don't see this as one that would warrant jail time. I'm trying to get voluntary to start with. But, you know, I go back to the Pedestrian Access Act, and I think we took away all jail time out of there. And, you know, if somebody is blocking the sidewalk, they can't go to jail, but if they're not paying their 10 cents, they, they can go to jail. So I would like all jail time removed.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Okay, Dave, you're next.
Yeah, I, anybody who has been paying attention to the news knows that plastics and plastic accumulation are a serious, serious problem facing our environment and facing our community. And so I don't have an objection, I appreciate this being brought to the public at this point, but I think we are at the very beginning in terms of a, of a public process here. Having talked to...
I'm having trouble hearing you, Dave.
That's all right, I'm having trouble hearing myself too, I hear a lot of that kind of... I would like, I'm not sure where we're at or what you're asking for, Yolanda, but before we move forward, I certainly would invite somebody from the grocery community to come in and talk about what the impact of this might be. I would invite frankly, the Department of Health, because there is a lot of talk right now about states that have placed these sorts of limitations on hold, because there is some comment that plastic bags actually are safer in this time of COVID in terms of not passing that on. So, so I think, I, I don't have a problem considering this going forward. I, I think it's really premature, because we haven't had a full public discussion with people on all sides who may be affected by this. And so I really would like to hear from the grocery community, I would like to hear from the Department of Health to see if in fact the, the materials out there that talk about plastic as being safer in terms of not passing this on. And I'd like to hear from code enforcement to say, what can we do, if anything, to enhance enforcement of littering? Because the issue is not so much that they're using plastic bags, although that's part of it, another big issue of it is they're not disposing of it correctly. And the, and the pictures that we've seen show a problem with littering, and we already have prohibitions against that. So I think that, that I'd like to hear a lot more from everybody that's affected on this before we go forward.
Yolanda, do you want to respond?
Yeah, and I think Wayne had said something to that effect, like he did, he saw all kinds of trash, but not too many trash bags. So part of that is having the funding, the money, to actually go pick up all the trash. And it's not so much about enforcement, it's about behavior change and getting rid of the trash that we have now through having these crews that actually get paid for it and go out there and, and go throughout the entire city. So I don't know how it could be premature to go, you know, clean our city and to start the behavior change. And like I said, you brought up COVID, this isn't, isn't going to be, we have a start date of July 1st of 2021. And I would think that we would be far beyond, or that we would be pretty much back to normal in terms of using plastic bags. I mean, we use a billion a year in this, in this country of ours, and it's not going to change until we do a behavior change. I mean, we did that with the water, even though we have plenty of water right now, we just want to make sure that people are conserving and change that behavior, so that when the time does come that we're in a drought, we're ready for it. And so it's like now, and so many other states, you know, have it, reusable bags, it just, it makes, it makes perfect sense. And I do want to, I want to be able to take this to a vote, whether I, you know, we have the five or not, because I think you're right, Dave, we can hear from all the, the grocery stores and other people that are impacted by this, as well as the community, who really thinks that this is something we need to do to move forward. And so whether right now, I wouldn't want to say, oh, I have four or five head nods, I would want to go ahead and put it on a regular session, so that we can vote on it and, and so that you have the opportunity to hear from all your constituents. So we all have the opportunity to hear from constituents and from others that are impacted by this trash cleanup and behavioral change.
Okay, I have Andy and then Wayne.
Yeah, I don't really have questions, we've got a couple of comments. The plastic bags are an issue, as, as pointed out already, it's much more of a littering issue than it is specifically plastic bags. All the videos we were taking a look at, the plastic bags were a pretty small percentage of the garbage that's dumped in the streams, you know, on our waterways and every, every place else. And as, as well of that, single-use, oh, uh, single-use plastics as a whole is much larger than plastic bags. It sounds to me like going after plastic bags is going after 3% of the problem. And so I'm not entirely sure how much you're going to accomplish in cleanup by doing that. The funding, if you're successful in 75%, and we clean it all up, well, the funding will go away, because you won't be using the plastic bags anymore. So that's, you know, it's kind of a circular argument and a self, self-defeating. But so far as making an impact, getting that started, you know, I can see the logic in it. I also applaud you in putting this to a vote, rather than trying to just pass legislation, which is a lot better way to approach it. But I have just a philosophical objection to the idea that government should jump in there and say, you're not going to use a plastic bag. Personally, I don't use plastic bags anytime I have a choice. Single-use paper bags, you know, are kind of work for me a lot better. But that's kind of where I'm at. I don't think that we, as a government, should be mandating that or collecting a fee.
Well, government is the people, and we've got to take care of our, you know, our city, our state. So I just wanted to, maybe, and that's what we need to do, because I doubt it's just 3%, but we need to get those hard numbers to figure out what that is.
Well, on that, I'd agree with you. It is all of us working together to do that, but going back to my original thing, it's much more of a littering problem than it is just a plastic bag problem.
And, um, your point about, you know, it's circular that we're going to end up, you know, cleaning it, and people won't be using plastic bags, and that's the hope. Because in the end, for me, it's not about getting the money, it's about the environment and doing that behavioral change. So if we end up where we, everybody's using reusable bags, then we, in my eyes, we succeeded.
And if I can just add what Yolanda's saying, you know, the, everybody goes to the grocery store, or they go to the liquor store, they go, they go to these stores. And, and it's really a point of education, I think, more, more than anything else. It would, you know, be great if we didn't collect so much money, because people stopped using them, but we may want to look at other things that are involved with littering, and it may raise some money, because a lot of people just go to the store and they forget. But, but, but it's, it's a message that most of the population is going to get. And I think it's a good way to start the discussion with the whole community, and, and I look at this as an economic development issue. And I know that's not, not how people are viewing it, but the amount of trash, you know, the amount of litter, the, the destruction it, uh, it has on our local environment, all the way down to, you know, water quality, going down to Fountain Creek and all the issues with that, and wildlife, and, but we're the city, America the Beautiful City, you know, we have this incredible mountain backdrop, we have a, a population that loves our outdoors. We, we want to invite tourists here, you know, and we do from all over the world to enjoy our beautiful city, and yet I have never had so many complaints about trash. And, and I see it so much, and, and when I go out and, and hike, and, and I just think we need to start the conversation somewhere, and that's why I really appreciate what Yolanda is bringing forward. It may not be the, the, the only answer or the, the total solution, but it's, it's a one that starts the conversation. If we could get more money to keep Colorado Springs Beautiful or another organization that can help us manage the incredible amount of litter that we have in our community, I think all the better. But maybe this is a starting point, and we can go down the road with some other issues as well down, down in the future. But I'm going to have, I, I know Jill had a hand up, and she withdrew it, but she's back again, so I'm going to have Jill talk and then Wayne.
Thank you, Mr. President, I, I just have a couple of questions, but first I wanted to just say how much I appreciate the work of Keep Colorado Springs Beautiful and Dee's work, they just do a fabulous job, and I, I appreciate them being here today and showing us all that they accomplish. Just questions, so I saw Sheree's projection of revenues, and I'm wondering if there's data out there about who, or what demographic is typically paying for these fees? Because I know as a, a middle-class woman, I haven't used a plastic bag in years, I'm educated on it, I understand it, and most of my friends do, I have an entire cabinet filled with them, much to the chagrin of my husband. So I, I am worried that we are disproportionately impacting lower income and a lot of our homeless, homeless folks, and want to make sure that that is not the case. So I wonder what the data is, I know California has had this in place for at least a year or two. Can we see some data about that? Because I have a feeling that most of our lower-income folks, and, well, not most, but most of our homeless folks are certainly not holding on to reusable bags and using them when they go to the store, and I don't want to impact them. Most of the, a lot of the pictures that Dee showed were homeless camps, and certainly there were a lot of plastic bags in there, but I wouldn't expect that to change much, but they would just be spending more time at the grocery. And then my other question is, we heard in a couple of our emails that at least one of our supermarkets is going to be proactively charging a fee within the next couple of years. So I'd like to know if that is on, actually true or planned to happen? And if so, what does that mean in regard to this ordinance? Do they start charging a separate fee? Do they start keeping our entire fee? What, what happens when a, a store does its own fee, fee for plastic bags?
Hi, Sheree McDaniel, oh, thank you. Sheree McDaniel, I am not aware of any information being available on the demographics of citizens who use the plastic bags. The way that we were able to get our information was on total remittance of the tax and/or total volume of sales in grocery stores or similar stores. So I can take a look and find out if that type of information is available and get back to you. And then secondly, if a grocery store were proactively charging for a grocery bag, that would act as another just item that they are selling? And so if we were to implement, if this were to pass and we were to implement this fee, then they would have to abide by the regulation just as any other store would. So then if they were charging 10 cents and, and the city was charging 10 cents, then I guess at that store, the grocery bag would cost 20 cents. And the city would still only retain the amount that per the, or, excuse me, per the ordinance would come to the city, the 60% of the 10 cents.
Okay, thank you, Sheree.
And I'd like to just comment, Wayne, to, to Jill's question. So people that are struggling economically are very impacted by air, water pollution, and the trash. They're even impacted more than a middle-class woman would be. So those, those, they have a larger impact with pollution by health disparities and all that. So that's more of a concern that the people in lower-income families have, so. And as to the homeless, when you get the percentage of the homeless to the overall population of 500,000, that's a really, really small percentage. And so, but we can look at those numbers.
Okay, Wayne?
Yeah, so first, I wanted to thank Yolanda for reaching out to each of the council members individually first. I, I do think there are some issues here, and I want to talk about these, and, and some of them are, are things that I, I know I've talked with Yolanda about. First, I, I agree with Dave that we would want to get the folks involved and give an opportunity for comment, both from the grocery stores, the retailers that would be affected by this, how does that change their operating costs? I, I think particularly during, this time, would also want to hear from the plastic industry and, and get their information, because I know they've done some research in this area. In terms of timing, I'm concerned about putting another Tabor exemption on the ballot at the same time as we are dealing with what I think is a fairly critical voter question with respect to the Tabor exemption and the application given the COVID downturn. So we just had a fairly extensive work session on that. Ballots are lengthy, and while we have, I know there's at least four issues already on the state ballot, there may be, of course, districts and school districts and others that may have various things on there. But I'm concerned with adding so much on the ballot that you give rise to a vote no, there's so much on there, just vote no on it all, and particularly if this includes a Tabor exemption, because that then wraps it up into the other discussion. And I think being more focused is a better way. And then finally, on a, on a philosophical view, I'm wary of additional government coercion with respect to this, as opposed to encouraging voluntary programs or supporting, you know, similar to, to the discussion we had with masks. It is one thing to say government should encourage this, should make it easy for people to use reusable bags, it's another to say we want to use the coercive power of government, and whether it's a fine, whether it is a mandated fee or tax. And I'd call this somewhat of a, I'd call this more of a tax than a fee, because it's not going directly just for the services, but it would also be going to clean up other things as well that are not directly related. So it's not just cleaning up plastic bags, it's cleaning up other issues which make up the bulk of the garbage, at least when I've done, some of the trail cleanups I've been involved with, it, plastic bags were a very small percentage, I don't know what the exact number was, but it wasn't anywhere near even a, one of the substantial components of what we were cleaning up along Cotwood Creek Trail, for example. So I, I've got some concerns on that, but I would like to get that public comment, I'd like to give those involved. In that, I know when we've talked with what the costs are of administration, sometimes those costs wind up being more than is actually generated, and so I'd like to hear from the retailers as well as the industry. And many of those retailers have been hit really incredibly hard over the last few months, and so to add this additional mandate, this additional cost on them. And particularly when you talk about those that, you know, don't, can't just flip a button, and I don't know if there's anybody in this category, maybe a couple of large retailers might be, but there are many smaller retailers that adding this in involves reprogramming their software or their computer or all of these other things, or ringing it in separately each time, so, so I would like to hear from them before we go forward with anything more. So those are my comments, thanks.
Okay, Bill, you're next.
Well, I, I will support this, because I believe it's like demand-side management, you know, you, there's, there's too much trash out there, you have a tendency to let it all fly. I think there's a balance in this particular system. Anything we can do to encourage a, a, a better way to do business? I don't consider this a penalty as much as I, I see it, this is a choice of what you want to do with your plastic containers. And so I think I'm, I'm going to support it, thank you.
All right, I have Andy, and then I might go around and see if people want to keep moving forward with this. Go ahead, Andy.
On the issue of cleaning up the place, Richard, Yolanda, I couldn't, I agree wholeheartedly with that, that part of the objective. It is very frustrating to see the trash out there, that's kind of goes back, I think, I think it's more of a issue of littering as opposed to one particular part of it. I got a question coming in from someone, is how do we get ahold of Ms. Cunningham? I got people who would like to volunteer to come join. So if you put the contact data up there, I think you, there'll probably be a whole lot more volunteers coming in, are ready to, are ready to post that on Facebook.
All right, well, well, you know, we have a, a decision to make, and I'm just going to kind of go around, do we want to move this forward to the point where we could put this on November's ballot? Yolanda, do you have a comment that you want to make, or no?
Yeah, like I said earlier, I, I do want to make, I want to make sure that we have this conversation, and I wanted to go for a vote at a regular session for council to, to vote on it, whether we have the votes right now, because it'll push us to really dive into the issue. And, and it'll be a real great education factor, but I do want to move forward and not let it, you know, let it just go by the wayside.
And, and I, I do too, and, and I'm going to kind of go around and see how other people feel. But, you, you know, it's just a good conversation, it's, I know that, you know, we can always find a better election, Wayne, and we hate to jeopardize something that's really important that's on the election right now, and, but I just can't think of another election, really, that's, that's going to be free and clear of, of other issues. You know, we're talking about PPRTA, we're talking about TOPPS, we're talking about possibly, you know, other, other initiatives, and, and I just can't think of an issue that's more timely. It's, it's been, it's been way past due, and, and let's have a good community discussion about this. It's not, this isn't something that we're inventing that's going to have all these unintended consequences, it's been used in other states and other cities, and it's not, it's not too broad-reaching from my standpoint, but I think it's very important to have this discussion, even if it fails. If the voters don't want to, you know, do this, and, and they decide that it's government overreach, we, we will have had a lot of good discussion about litter and single-use plastic and about what we want... and about what we want our community to look like and be in the future. And I don't think we should wait. I think the time is right and it should have been, should have been something we did a while ago. So I'm going to go around. Tom, how do you feel? Are you there, Tom?
Yeah, let me get off of mute. I really think both Wayne and Andy have kind of covered my thoughts. I appreciated Yolanda coming and having this discussion and I brought up the Trader Joe's situation. I am concerned, I think single-use paper bags are terrific, but the ones, the bags that, you know, are reusable and that are various kinds of materials that tend to be, you know, disease-ridden, I think, and cause more problems not only to us, but the food and things that we put inside of them. I'm against anybody throwing stuff in the waterways or trashing, you know, our organization. And as you said, Richard, that conversation, you know, is worth having. I don't think that 2020 is the time to put this on the ballot. You know, I agree with what Wayne said about the timing for that. I respect what you said, that maybe this is past due. Every time I go to see my daughter in Austin, they have got, you know, the rule where you can't use plastic bags in Austin, Texas. I just, you know, without hearing from a broader segment of the community and worried about, I think everybody is concerned about their financial future right now. A lot of people still on unemployment, a lot of people living hand-to-mouth, you know, a dollar for 10 plastic bags for some people, you know, might be an amount that they can't really deal with. So I would like to put this off and discuss it next year.
Okay. Jill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, and I asked some questions and I would like to get answers to those and hear from the community, but right now, I'm happy to have it come forward, but I'm, right now, I'm unlikely to vote for it. So we'll just wait and see.
Okay. And then Dave?
My turn to get off mute. I got a couple of thoughts on it. First, I, I think there is a lot of other issues that are timely right now. And frankly, the good news is we're dealing with those issues. We're dealing with some really heavy stuff right now and stuff that needed to be dealt with before, but it wasn't. So we're dealing with it now. And this arguably should have been dealt with before and we do need to deal with it. I frankly say we go forward with the investigation of this. I am not in favor of putting this on in November for the reasons stated and also because I don't think this is an appropriate issue for an election. I think this is an appropriate issue if we want to go down that road for council and the mayor to address. You know, a couple of years ago, the state, the citizens of the state passed a constitutional amendment talking about we don't want to use the constitution to make policy, so we made it harder to do that. This is making policy through a charter amendment. This is our role. If we're going to do this, this is the role of city council. And rather than going forward with a charter amendment, I am all in favor of exploring this and entering into the messiness of democracy, which we have seen a lot of over the last year, but doing this for purposes of an ordinance and getting the mayor involved.
All right. Well, it seems like, Yolanda, that there's just four of us who are willing to, you know, have this discussion further to put it on this November's ballot.
Good comment, if anything.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah. Andy and Bill. Yep.
Yeah, it's a referred ordinance and not a charter change.
Yeah.
And frankly, I, in some ways, agree with David, but I disagree that I'd rather have seen this be referred ordinance rather than a council sitting, making this imposition. And that's something I want to applaud to you all for pursuing this particular path instead of trying to go down and just enforce it. That said, it's one of those things that I don't agree with from a philosophical point of view, but that does not mean I'm pro-litter. I absolutely think that the problems of littering out there are really, really bad and I think need to, do need to be addressed. I just don't quite agree this is the right way to do it.
Okay. Bill, and then I think we'll, we'll end this discussion and then we'll, we'll talk about what we can do maybe in the future. Bill, go ahead.
Well, as several things, one, it's, this is a program that demonstrated success in other communities. Look at Jill now bringing her bag to that particular location. And I find it disconcerting, one more time, for us not to put something on the ballot to let the citizens make up their own minds because it's not the appropriate time, the appropriate place, the appropriate discussion. I mean, it is something that we can all agree would, would help our community. So I think we should let the people vote on it. Thank you.
All right. I think, I think we're going to move on. Yolanda, any, any final comments you want to make?
Yes, well, I got there's four and then Jill would like to have more information on it. So I think that's five to move forward.
I think she's right.
Oh, is she? Okay. Did I get that wrong? I thought, I thought it was just Jill, Yolanda, Richard and Bill that wanted to move forward and everybody else wanted to wait till another election. Is there anybody else?
I thought Don wanted to.
Yeah, I thought.
Want to move forward now? I'm sorry. Yeah. So we can move forward if Don, Don wants to. Okay. Move forward. Okay. So we're going to move forward with. Okay.
I'll, thanks for remembering me, Yolanda. So the, I think Dave and Jill asked some very interesting questions that I wouldn't mind hearing the answer to. Wayne brought up a very good point on timing. I think there are other elections that the, the impact of the asking for other increases is not anywhere near the severity of losing $47.3 million in taper, taper cap excesses. But I think I'm the same as Jill, let's get the answers, but right now I don't know if I vote for it or not.
Okay.
So one, one more work session.
Okay. One more work session and we'll be able to, you know, whether we hear from the public or not, is that, is that good, Yolanda?
It sounds good. And I was going to end with another video, if you don't mind. And since we don't have sound, Ted can narrate it. And Jerry Cordova is going to be in that video, so I want to give him a shout out. And so if you'd bear with me for just to close on the video, because we have people of the public watching this too.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
And Richard, while she's doing that, for the next work session, I would ask Carly or whoever is assisting on this to reach out to some representative from the grocery retailers and the other folks that we talked about today.
Okay. So noted.
And David, I did capture that in the takeaways earlier.
I figured, but I just wanted to double check. And Mark wants to talk.
And Mark, go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt Councilmember Avila's video here, but I just had a couple of quick clarifications. I did want to let the council know that I will amend the ordinance to fix the penalty provision that Councilmember Knight pointed out. And the only other question I have, because I want to make sure I get as clean an ordinance to you as possible, is related to 615-106, the exemptions. Councilmember Knight mentioned possibly removing subsection A, which is related to a participant in a federal or state food assistance program. And I just wanted to get councils' feel for whether we should remove that at this point or not.
Yolanda, how do you feel?
Well, if we, a lot of echo.
Go ahead. You're clear now.
Well, part of the money that's coming in or that has the potential to come in will be providing reusable bags for people at all the stores and maybe libraries or where people can pick up these bags for use. So I would be okay with that, but I think we need to have more discussion on it.
Okay. So Mark, maybe, maybe do it both ways and just, you know, we can always add and delete if we decide to move forward. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. And put this on the 713 work session coming up next. Is that okay? All right. Okay, let's, let's.
Is the video on? I'm not sure if you all recognize that all of this trash is here in Colorado Springs, nowhere else.
I recognize that and I recognize a lot of the people on the video. All right. That was definitely enlightening and we, we need to keep those images in our minds. All right. We're going to move on to the next agenda item. And that is 8F, a resolution approving an economic development agreement between the City of Colorado Springs and Project Next. And Bob, are you in the audience? Go ahead, Bob. I guess I don't know if you have a PowerPoint.
Council, Bob Kope, Economic Development Officer. I'll be doing a presentation on an economic development project, Project Next. Due to time considerations, I plan just to hit the very high points. There's more detail in the presentation if you'd like to look at that later. And of course, I'd be able to answer just more detailed questions if you have those. So just a brief description of the project. Project Next is a multinational enterprise information technology company. It's a global edge-to-cloud platforms and service company that helps organizations accelerate outcomes by unlocking value from all of their data everywhere. In other words, they're in data centers, servers.